Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May edition of the Lewisville Town Council meeting. Glad you all are here with us this evening. Those of you watching at home on TV 6, I hope you have pulled up your TV dinners and your TV trays and are getting ready for some great entertainment tonight. We're going to beat what's on the opposite channels, I'm sure, so we'll check your ratings and make sure you're watching. You can also watch us tonight. I know some of the folks are keeping track of us on Facebook, so we're doing our best as a council and our communications folks to deliver council meetings in as many ways as we can on many different platforms so that folks can stay engaged with their government. We're pleased again to have with us Pastor Joshua Bowles from Temple Baptist Church. This is your second time in a row with us, and we're awfully, awfully glad you're here with us. You'll listen to the vacation in just a moment, and then our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Ed Smith. And if you all will stand, if you're able, and join us, please.
Let's pray. Father, we love you tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, the council meeting. Father, we thank you for our citizens, Father, many of them who are present tonight and interested in their local government. Thank you, Father, for the board, the council members who make it up. Thank you for their hard work and their ideas that go into this. And Father, we ask that you bless the meeting tonight. Father, give wisdom for every individual, help everything to be done decently and order, and we'll thank you for all that you do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Pastor Josh, thanks for being with us. Give our best to your congregation. Thank you. Very good. Council members, I heard from Councilmember Zinger earlier today. He has an engagement. His daughter is receiving a VFW scholarship award, and she's also giving a speech tonight, and he figured he would be in the doghouse with his daughter if he wasn't there to cheer on the tents, so I'd entertain a motion for Councilman Zinger to be excused.
Slow move.
Very good. Everybody moved, and everybody seconded. So Ms. Walker, choose your poison.
We get extra time.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Councilman Zinger is excused. As we always, as customary for the council to do, we start with an introduction of our council members, starting over here with Councilmember Smith.
Good evening. I'm Ed Smith. Nice to have you.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Mock. Thank you for coming out tonight.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Berry.
Ken Sadler.
And I'm Fred Franklin. It's a pleasure to serve as one of your council members.
Thank you, council members. Also with us tonight is our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Bo Howf, our communications specialist Rachel Domenica, back there on our camera. Nice to see you. Town clerk Joyce Walker, and our town finance director Pam Orell. And, I might as well go ahead and do this right now. Is George here, too? There he is, in the front row. And our public works director, George Hauser.
I don't know what those are for.
You don't have no idea. Well, for those of you who don't know Pam's son, Bill, he is William. He has the, he holds several world's records, a number of them the Guinness World Records. He's also in the international competition of cup stacking. And if you've not seen him, you need to go on YouTube. I believe he's just done a commercial with LeBron James, an article in the newspaper about it, which is, we're all real excited about it. It's a pretty big deal for us. So if you haven't seen him, go on YouTube and just Google his name, William Orell, and watch him stack cups. He's pretty, it's pretty amazing. So anyway, we'll leave this up here in his honor tonight, and tell him, we're awfully proud of him and for what he's been able to do.
I will. Thank you.
Councilmember, we've not had any changes to the agenda since our briefing. If there are no revisions.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of five items. The first is Resolution 2017025 for the acceptance and approval of the monthly financials for March 2017. Next is the approval of council briefing inaction minutes from April 6, 2017. The approval of council meeting minutes from April 13, 2017. The approval of council budget meeting minutes from April 7, 2017. And lastly, Resolution 2017024, accepting the resignation of Michael Prince from the Lewisville Planning Board.
Very good. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that ordinarily come before the council on a routine basis. There are financial reports and matters of our committees that don't require a great deal of debate. We take them as a group for efficiency. However, any item, any council member could ask for any item to be pulled off the consent agenda to be discussed individually. If not, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have some presentations this evening, and we'll start with our, something that's near and dear to all of our hearts, our paving condition survey report. And George, we'll ask you to do the introductions, if you would, please.
This evening, we have Mr. John Fersner, Miss Infrastructure, his firm, conducted the pavement survey, and I'm going to turn it over to him to let you do his presentation.
George, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fersner, if you'll come over here to the podium, that way our folks at home can pick up your audio.
Okay.
Thank you. I know people are anxiously waiting to hear your voice, so we'd like you over there.
And what we'll do, Mr. Mayor, is that we do have a presentation. I have a PowerPoint, and probably what I will do is just kind of ask Joyce to kind of move it forward as we kind of make our way through the presentation.
Great.
You ready? And I'll swatch him. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll be. Don't have bad eyesight. Excuse us.
I thought we were just taking it all.
Well, again, I want to thank George for the opportunity. Again, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city town manager as well. We've been very fortunate. My firm has done your survey, starting back in 2003. This is the fourth survey we've done, so we're appreciative of the opportunity to provide this service to the town. I'm not going to bog down into the details, but I will at any time and point in the presentation, if you do have a question, please feel free to stop me, and we can kind of address that, you know, concern at that point. Otherwise, we can kind of entertain questions at the end, so.
Perfect.
Just real quick, right now, Lewisville has just a little over 55 centerline miles of roads, and we did the survey back in January of this year, fought the one snow that we did have, so we managed to be able to get the survey in by late January. What we routinely do is we're looking at what are called pavement distresses, and that's basically, there are eight common distresses out there that we'll look a little bit more in detail here. We also collect some additional information while we're out there. Once we get that data, we take it back and crunch the numbers, and we come up with a PCR or a pavement condition rating, which basically is an ABC, for all practical purposes, of how the road is performing and what the condition of that road is. Based on the condition of those roads, we would then also make recommendations as far as any types of improvements that might be needed to bring that road into a better repair at that point in time. It's a very busy slide, and I apologize for that. Point being here, which is, in conversations with your mayor prior to this meeting, you folks already get this, you treat your road system as an asset, as it should be. Just real quick here, kind of working through the math, roughly, the road value out there is around $30, $31 a square yard. Lewisville has about 679 square yards. Doing the math real quick, that's $21 million. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. It's probably the largest asset the town owns, and so it behooves the town to be aware of that and make sure that it spends the time, and particularly, the budgetary needs to maintain that asset. Mentioned, these are four of the eight pavement distresses. Alligator cracking, which is going to be a pretty severe distress. It's the most severe of the distresses. It basically is a sub, it's not the pavement that's failing, but basically, the foundation of the subgrade under the pavement is failing, and to repair that, it's usually a pretty extensive repair, and it's a fairly costly one. Block cracking is, again, going to be, the asphalt just kind of deteriorates, and it does expand and contract, and with that, as the weather cools and heats, it expands and contracts, and will develop some block cracking eventually. Reflective cracking is going to be primarily if you've overlaid a concrete road. I don't think you have any reflective cracking in Lewisville. Raveling is just, if you let the asphalt kind of oxidize and deteriorate enough, it gets very rough, and you have a lot of the gravel, and again, that's a little bit of that in Lewisville, but not that much. The other four are going to be rutting. You're normally going to see this at an interchange where you have heavy truck traffic or buses are going to take place in the wheel pass. Patching is going to be another distress that we look at. This particular picture was taken, I'm from Greensboro, and that's basically the rehabilitation that the city is doing with the sewer line, and they're actually having to cut down into the road and patch everywhere there's a sewer connection made. The reason I tell you that is because we were fortunate enough, about a year or so ago, we kind of got involved in a project where the pavement department felt that the water department, water and sewer guys, were tearing their pavement up kind of in an accelerated rate. Long story short, we put all these people in a room for about six months, and the end result was that there will be monies moving over from the water and sewer folks to accommodate that accelerated deterioration due to this rehabilitation project. Bleeding is, again, not really that prevalent any longer. It's, again, kind of, as a liquid asphalt kind of comes to the surface. And the last one's going to be ride quality, just how smooth or rough is that ride of the asphalt pavement going to be. This is just a quick snapshot. Again, we talk about those eight distresses. We look at them in a severity level, basically, from none, light, moderate, and severe, and then we also kind of look at and work with George, in particular, on streets that are considered low volume, primarily subdivision streets, and then some of your streets are going to be a little bit busier and are going to be high volume. Only thing I'll point out here is, again, we talk about that alligator cracking, and as you can look up there, you've got about 6% of your system has severe alligator cracking, and so I would kind of, that raises a little bit of a red flag to me, and would kind of just point that out, as that kind of is a priority as far as maintenance moving forward. Talked about additional data. We look at the number of lanes, and in particular, we just kind of note where you have existing sidewalk on either side of the street, where there's curb and gutter, and also the asphalt heights above the gutter. The reason that we do that last one is primarily, as you make overlays, eventually, as particularly with curb and gutter, you have trip hazards and elevation differences to where is it, what you want to do at that point is to kind of mill off or remove some of that existing asphalt. That's just kind of an indicator at that point. What we do is, again, we talk about the ratings. It's really just kind of a math exercise based on the distress, again, and the severity of it. There are deduct points. Every street segment starts out as 100, and what we do then, as we denote those distresses, whether it be block cracking, alligator cracking, and then it's kind of minus so many points to where, in this particular case, at the bottom, we get down to a 75. The only caveat there is that we do stop the subtraction when a road actually hits zero. We do not go into the negative numbers. We figure if it's at zero, it's in pretty bad shape at that point, so. This is really kind of one of the key slides. Your overall pavement rating for the entire street system here in Lewisville is 83.4. The municipal average right now is about an 80, so overall, the Lewisville system is in good, is in good shape, and it's actually above average, as far as the state's concerned. You have about 37% of your roads that are in need of some type of maintenance. That may sound high, but if you get to the last bullet there, the average in the state is 47, so you're actually above average in both your rating, as well as your street systems needing maintenance. Last of all, what that does, I tell you, we looked at kind of maintenance activities. It's a big number, and I know that, $1.2 million. What that number stands for is if you were to go out tomorrow and fix everything that's wrong with your road system, which is not realistic, but what it does is just kind of tell you, and we'll look at a little bit more priorities in just a second here, but that's just kind of as a snapshot of the total needs as far as the town roads are concerned. It works out, it's about half and half, what we call routine maintenance and then resurfacing, as you can see the breakdown there. And there are some additional costs, because these are strictly just the maintenance activities, but you are going to have some other types of milling cost and raising of structures that would add some additional costs as you do some resurfacing with that. This is probably my, well, I've got two slides here that are my favorite. This actually shows what George and I talked about when I made the presentation to him and your manager. What this looks at is kind of categorizes your roads in very good, good, fair, poor, and very poor categories. What you see here is the four surveys that we've done, again, indicating, starting back in 2003, '06, '10, and just in January in '17. And you can see, back in 2003, there were not a whole lot of good roads in Lewisville. You only had about 24% of the system was in good shape. Now you're talking about over 56% of that. And so that, the graph is growing in the very good category, and as you look at the other end of there, the very poor, you've gone from almost 36% down to about 7% of your system. So, again, as I talked to your mayor earlier, I've, this is pretty incredible. I mean, I will tell you that you are an exception to the rule right now, because a lot of folks that I work with in North Carolina are struggling budget-wise, and their graphs are not going this way, they're actually going the opposite way. So kudos to the town council for funding the effort to keep the roads in good shape. This is just, again, kind of a summary for the last four surveys. Again, back in 2003, 63.7, which is obviously not a good rating, so about 13, 14 years ago, your street system was in not the best shape, but as you can see, it's been on a steady incline and increasing almost 20 points in the last 14 years. And again, this is very much not indicative. We recently did a similar survey for, for example, Chapel Hill, and their graph actually goes the exact opposite way. They've lost about 20 points in the last 15 to 20 years. So, again, you folks have paid attention to that asset and have funded it properly. Just real quick, again, what we talk about is trying to preserve that pavement, spending some money on the, before that road gets in terribly bad shape. You can spend a little bit of money, do some crack sealing and some pavement repair without letting the pavement fall into dire straits, because once it gets to a point, you almost have to rebuild that road, and it gets very costly to do that. And so a little bit of money on the front end bears fruit from having to spend a whole lot of money later on road reconstruction and rehabilitation. This is kind of one of the most interesting slides that I have, and it kind of is the most dramatic point of pavement preservation. Believe it or not, the jurisdiction line runs right down the centerline of this street. The jurisdiction to the top of the slide believes in pavement preservation, and they actually do what's called crack sealing. So there was just a crack there, they sealed that, and you see that it's held up fairly well. The jurisdiction on the lower part of the slide did not crack seal, and you can see that it's gone from a crack to now alligator cracking, and you now have a foundation, whereas you're going to have to remove this pavement and do a fairly extensive patch. So it's just a great example of spending a little bit of money on the front end to keep from having spent a lot of money years down the road. Not going to bore you with this, again, we talked about some of the maintenance activities. We look at activities for the various different distresses, and also the low and high-volume streets, and this is kind of the ones that we look at as kind of being state averages, as well as what George has looked at over the last four cycles that we've done the And again, this is just going to be, to basically get the cost in the very end, we take those maintenance activities, the areas, and using these unit costs, we can kind of come up with the costs for crack sealing, skin patching, full depth patching, and the like. Again, busy slide. What it kind of does is kind of just show you in summary the various different needs that the town of Lewisville has. Again, if you remember back when we talked about, I was a little bit concerned about the severe alligator, and you had about 6% of the road, that, the third item down is full depth patching, and you can see you've got quite a bit of money that's going to, and that's to basically try and fix that full depth patching. And then down below there, you've got some resurfacing needs, and again, that's if you sum everything up here, is where we kind of get all that monies to be the 1.2 million as far as the overall needs for the town of Lewisville. Just a simple graph, basically, between the, what we call routine maintenance and then the resurfacing, and again, it breaks it out. It's almost 50/50 as far as your maintenance needs, as far as routine versus resurfacing at this point. Last of all, this is kind of just a pie chart, which basically shows the, basically, the road system. The good news, again, here, you have 63% of your system that has no repair. It's in good shape. You don't need to do anything to it at this point in time. Again, you can kind of see there, that full depth patching kind of keeps jumping out. Again, I would encourage you to kind of look at those types of needs and maybe kind of focus in and address some of those types of full depth patching needs. This is, again, just another pie chart that kind of breaks down that overall 1.2 million that we talked about. Again, about 44% of that goes into full depth patching. It's a pretty extensive repair, and therefore, a very costly repair. Again, we talked about trying to, you don't have monies for everything, so what we do is we work with and provide George and your manager with a prioritization, and we look at high, medium, and low priorities. Because alligator cracking and that full depth patching is a high priority, most of your monies are going, about 80% of it, are then at high priority. So that's just kind of the way it works out in this particular case. Just to kind of summarize, again, I would encourage down, done a great job, obviously, going from the '60s in 2003 to 83-plus right now, again, looking at those preventative maintenance-type activities, and just as we kind of look at, if you have, 15 years is what's considered to be industry standard as far as a paving cycle, and with your 55 miles of road, you're looking at about 3.7 miles a year, or budgeting around about a half a million dollars for resurfacing needs, to just kind of stay ahead of that curve. Last of all, asphalt is out there. It is deteriorating. It's subject to traffic, weather, water, all that kinds of stuff. Being aware of that is obviously the key, and like I say, you folks are keenly aware of that based on the conditions that your roads are improving. Payment preservation, and again, it is one of your largest assets, so I'd again encourage you to devote the budgetary needs to maintain it the way it should be. And I said a lot, and I talk pretty fast, and I apologize, but I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions.
I have two things. Thank you for the presentation. I have two questions. One is in relationship to something you said, where we were above average in two categories?
Correct.
I think one of the, not to be in dispute, but one category, it was good to be above, and the other category was not good to be above, so I think that it would make more sense to me if it was stated to be we were favorable to both of those numbers, because the second one, the higher number, at 47. whatever percent it was versus our 30-some-odd percent, you didn't want to be above that number.
No, you don't.
You wanted to be below that number, so we weren't above the average there. The other thing is, when you, when you're doing your prioritization, and you look at crack progressing to alligator crack, how, what is the progression of the, in terms of time, is there a way to predict how long it will take to go from a crack to an alligator crack regarding, requiring this full depth patching that you were talking about?
Not really. I mean, it's going to depend on a lot of different circumstances. Weather, one, particularly, also traffic-type needs, if traffic, if you have a lot of construction that now takes place on that road. It's really something that is just going to be very random, as far as how long it's going to take to do that. That's why, one of the things that George has been very good about is having us look at this every three to four years, so that you can kind of keep your eye on it and do it that type thing, so.
Right.
It's, I can't really even give you an average there, and I apologize, but it's just, it's something to just kind of watch and, you know, start keeping an eye on it.
The only reason I ask is because, and it may go into your calculation, is because if you have something at the crack stage, it seems that's a higher priority to me than something that's the alligator, although the alligator crack is an aggravation to people.
Correct.
But full depth is full depth. I mean, whenever you get to it, is when you get to it. And so it seems to me that you, and maybe, again, that's what you do in your consideration for how you recommend the cycle or the schedule for paving. You look at where the cracks are and what is more typical, recognizing that there are variations in weather and patterns and traffic patterns and all that, and get at the cracks first, because you know eventually they're going to be alligators.
Correct.
If you don't do something about it. And so is that part of your calculus when you make your recommendation?
Well, it is, and one of the things that we do recommend is, and in my opinion, crack sealing is probably the most cost beneficial thing that you can do. It's fairly inexpensive. I'm not going to stand up here and say it's extremely attractive. It's not.
Right. Right. No, it's not.
But, yes, I mean, you can spend a little bit of money there, because the biggest enemy of pavement is water, and once you allow that crack to get in there, that crack is just going to get bigger based on weather patterns and in particular, traffic, and the wider it gets, the more water it gets in there, it gets into the base and stuff like that. So try and catch it before it does, and so, yes, that's what we would encourage, and it's going to be very much of a balancing act.
Right.
Is that, yes, you want to be able to make sure you catch those things on the front end with crack sealing, but you're going to have to pay attention to those roads that are completely falling apart, too.
Right.
And that's always a delicate balance, to be able to kind of do both of those in the same type of budget cycle and stuff.
Okay. Saul?
Got a question for Mr. Fersner. In this report that you did, or this analysis that has just been completed, there was a snapshot in time taken in January, I believe, as you stated earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Did you prioritize from the top to the bottom, or the bottom to the top, each and every street in the town of Lewisville as to their condition?
We did. Basically, what we have provided you with is a couple, a lot of digital files, two digital files in particular. We basically look at every street segment, and what I mean by that is it's intersection to intersection, and so you may have Main Street that is Main Street, but there may be six blocks of it, and so we look at each and every six of those blocks.
But that is in a full report.
It is, yes.
You know, obviously, tonight's presentation was a synopsis of that and all.
I don't want to interrupt you, but as part of that, what we do is we give it two listings. One is an alphabetical listing, and then the second one, which I think you're kind of getting to, we actually provide you, based on that PCR rating, we basically provide you with that street listing. And so you'll see, basically, streets that are either 0, 1, or 2, and kind of work their way all the way to 100. And so, yes, you can very quickly see from that street listing as to what streets are in the worst shape.
So I can take from what you're saying, then, that our public works, then George, will take that information and present paving contracts and repair contracts and so forth based upon that report?
Correct, and that's exactly what it is. It's basically intended to be the first step in identifying those roads that are in the highest needs of those repairs, and then move forward with the paving contracts and repairs at that point.
Okay.
You're exactly correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ken, I believe you alluded to this. We kind of use a blended approach where we take the roads most in need, but we also take a look at some of the other roads that, with the simple topping, or I'm not sure what the appropriate word is, but with the minor amount of work, those roads are in good shape, and they don't deteriorate as quickly, so we kind of go at it from both ends.
Right.
Very good. Any other questions?
Excellent. Thank you very much for your presentation, and thanks for your work on this project.
Thanks again for, we enjoyed the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Do you like to speak to the fact that 55 miles is town roads versus DOT roads for Lewisville?
I don't know. Go ahead.
No, you.
I'm not sure your point of...
That we have DOT maintained roads, too.
In that 55.
That's not in that 55.
That's not in that 55. Right. Well, that is true. I think, as Mayor Pro Tim Mock just pointed out, is that some people think that Shaliford Road is a town road, but it actually is a state DOT road. So we are responsible, if you own to a neighborhood, chances are that road is ours. If you look at a major thoroughfare like Shaliford Road, or Lewisville Clemens Road, or Lewisville Vienna Road, chances are that's going to be a state DOT road. So we often do get calls from folks saying, gosh, the Lewisville Clemens Road in front of my house has a big pothole. Can you guys fix it? And we have to defer oftentimes to the state to do those kinds of things, but if it's in front of your house in the neighborhood, absolutely, we're going to get on it, because that's one of our roads. Thanks, great point to bring out. Mother of William, I think you're up next with our CAFRA award, as she will here forever Mother of William, I think you're up next with our CAFRA award, as she will here forever be known.
That's okay. The Government Finance Officers Association established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program, or CAFRA program, to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum reporting requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. The goal of the program is not to assess the financial health of the participating governments, but rather to ensure that users of their financial statements have the information they need to do so themselves. Reports submitted to the CAFRA program are reviewed by selected members of the professional staff of the Government Finance Officers Association and the Special Review Committee, which comprises individuals with expertise in public sector financial reporting and includes financial statement preparers, independent auditors, academics, and other financial professionals. We did enter our CAFRA into the program for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and I'm pleased to report that we have been awarded the certificate. If I may, I'd like to read just a small portion of the letter that we did receive from the program. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the town of Lewisville by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFRA has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and to motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFRA.
Very good. Council members, comments?
Good job.
Absolutely.
Excellent job.
This is your first one?
Yes.
Excellent. It's, just so folks know, I mean, I think as all the council members are acutely aware that your tax dollars are very important to us, and how we manage them, how we spend them, and how we steward them is incredibly essential to our credibility with our residents and our taxpayers. What Pam has just talked about is not only how we spend them, but how we track them and how we make sure that through the appropriate and proper accounting practices that are recognized by this organization, that you can rest assured that we are tracking your money wisely, hopefully as wisely we're spending it. Thank you, Pam. We enter to our public forum at this time. This is the first of two opportunities when those of you who are present in the room can address the council on any matter that you feel is near and dear to your heart or is important to want to call to our attention. We do have one person signed up to speak, Susan Linker. Susan, if you'll come up, please say your name, your address. Good to see you, Susan.
I'm Susan Linker and I live at eight fourteen Reynolds Road in Lewisville. And tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Historical Society. And what we're gonna do is give you a very brief progress report to update you on what's been happening with the Nissen House. We thought you would be interested in it. We're pleased to report that restoration work was completed on the upper backside of the Nissen House in February of this year. It included scraping, priming, painting of the siding, and restoration of two large upper windows with replacement of one sash. And then on April fourth, our contractor's work crew removed the badly deteriorated standing seam metal roof over the rear of the house and replaced it with a new galvalume standing seam metal roof, so that area is now leak free for the first time since before the house was moved. Roof covers the area where we plan to have a catering kitchen, two ADA bathrooms, and a generous storage area. We had the architectural plans drawn for this area last summer, and it will be the part of the house where work on the interior will begin. Restoration and repair work that still remains to be done on the exterior of the house includes restoration of the lower backside, rebuilding of the two chimneys, and cleaning and painting of the main standing seam metal roof. We'll decide what the next step of the work will be after discussing the possibilities with our contractor. This past April, the Nissen House project received a generous gift from the June Ficklin Estate Charitable Trust. Mrs. Ficklin, who is the great granddaughter of George Elias Nissen and who passed away this last fall, we're sad to report, visited the house in October of two thousand and eight and has provided financial support several times since then in the name of the Nissen family heirs. Her help has been essential to the continuing progress with work on the house. And I think it's important to keep in mind that her investment in the Nissen House is a continuation of the investments that George Elias made in Lewisville over a hundred and forty years ago with his sawmill that stood on the Shaliford Square and his gristmill on the Yadkin River in the Lewisville township. The wagons built by his company ran through Lewisville on the Great Wagon Road, and they supported the economic boom of the late nineteenth century in North Carolina and the eastern U.S. He laid the groundwork for the future incorporated town that we now know and live in today. We will use the estate donation from the Nissen family heirs to move work forward on the house, and we're most grateful for that help. We're currently in the process of writing a grant application to the National Trust for Historic Preservation to request matching funds for professional testing of the wood in the Nissen House to help determine the correct date of its construction, which we're currently a bit unsure of. This is known as dendrochronological testing. We will use the information obtained from this testing to support our application to place the Nissen House on the National Register of Historic Places. And the test results will also support the accuracy of any kind of historical presentations that we make about the Nissen House. Lastly, in late March two thousand and seventeen, we planted a pink perfection camellia at the front left of the Nissen House as a memorial to our good friend and member of the Nissen House Steering Committee Brenda Shanks, who passed away in January of this year. Sorry. We also filled the large gap on the north side of the house where a tree was removed last fall, thanks to you all, by planting a good size Foster's holly, which matches all the other Foster's hollies growing on that side of the house. Wood chip mulch has also been spread over that area to help control erosion from rainwater runoff. And as always, we would like to express our appreciation to the town of Lewisville for its ongoing support of this important project. We will continue our efforts to complete work on the house and open it, as our motto states, as an educational, cultural, social, and historic resource that serves Lewisville, the Piedmont Triad, and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. We, I know expressed the sentiments of council when I say to you, and I see Mary Kay in the audience as well, for all you're doing on the Nissen House. You are few, but you are strong, and you are persistent, and you have made a lot of progress, and we're very proud of the work that you do, and we're glad to be part of it as well. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak this evening at the first public forum? Any of our rising stars from Reagan would like to make a comment about what you've observed so far, or why you're here, or why you wish you were someplace else? Very good, then we'll go ahead and close this first session of the public forum. Ms. Walker, you wanna please bring us up to date on a public hearing that we continued from last month?
Yes. Excuse me. Last month, the council approved an annexation of five properties along Concorde Church Road. As with the legislature, we have to take the zoning from the county into the town. So we continued that to this particular meeting because we also needed a recommendation from the planning board.
And we received that recommendation?
Yes, you have. You have received it unanimously.
Council, if you remember, we did continue this from last week. This is a public hearing. We all, we will open the floor now to anybody who wishes to speak in support or in opposition to this resolution. Again, this is to extend the zoning to this particular part of the newly annexed, voluntary annexed section of the town. Anybody here to speak in support or in opposition? Anyone at all? Very good. We'll close the public hearing. That's the longest public hearing we've had, that was thirty days of public hearing, so thank you very much. Council discussion on this?
Make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand and seventeen zero eleven.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. And let me welcome these new properties and these new property owners into the town. We're always thrilled when folks who live on our boundaries wish to become part of our community and ask to voluntarily be brought in to the town of Lewisville. So welcome, folks, you're now one of us. Mr. Manager, new business.
Okay, for new business, we have consideration of resolution two zero one seven zero two three. This resolution will set the public hearing for Thursday, June eighth, two thousand and seventeen, in this room to receive comments for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year budget. As many in this room already know, council has been in deliberation since the presentation in April for this budget, and this is the culmination of the process. June's meeting will have the official public hearing for comments from anyone who cares to talk about it, and then council will have the opportunity to consider it and approve the budget that evening.
Very good. Council members, any questions for the manager? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion. Go ahead.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second to hold our public hearing on our budget Thursday, June eighth, two thousand and seventeen, which is our next month's meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. We hope we'll have a full house next month when we approve the spending of four point one million dollars of your money, and you'll have an opportunity to look through the budget between now and then and know that we're spending it wisely. And I realize that's twice that I've said that at this meeting, but we want you, I really want you to know and emphasize how hard this council works on your behalf and how seriously we take the resources that we have available to us. Mr. Manager, or, Mr. Walker, our town independence day road closing, please.
Yes, excuse me. The state has dictated that anytime we close a DOT road, we must send information to the DOT to validate that there will be no roadwork at that time. So we have received confirmation from our local DOT Division Nine that Shaliford Road will be available for us to close for our July fourth celebration. But we must approve an ordinance saying so and put it in the record.
Any questions for Ms. Walker? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance two oh one seven oh one six.
Second.
A little heavy on the motions and the seconds over here, they're a little faster actually, a little more awake tonight. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, that's passed unanimous. Ms. Walker, go ahead and move forward and close roads. Ms. Orell, you have a budget ordinance for us.
Sir, we have ordinance two zero one seven zero one seven, amending budget ordinance two zero one six zero one five in the amount of two thousand eight hundred dollars to increase the budget for overtime in the administration department.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Orell? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance two zero one seven zero one seven.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Ms. Orell, you're up again, please.
We have ordinance two zero one seven zero one eight to establish the capital project ordinance for the Gateway Project. The project authorized is the purchase of Broadway Indoor Utilities, preliminary engineering and construction for the Gateway Project into the town of Lewisville from Williams Road. This project ordinance allows the town of Lewisville to proceed with the capital project within the terms of the contract documents and the budget found within the ordinance.
Any questions for Ms. Orell? We'll entertain a motion.
Make it. Go ahead.
Motion to approve ordinance two oh one seven oh one eight.
It's a point you pause for the left.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mrs. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion by council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Mr. Perkins, our contractor of Forsyth County Sheriff's Office.
Yes, next is consideration of resolution two zero one seven zero two six. This resolution would give authority to contract with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. As we all know, the county Forsyth Sheriff's Department does provide community policing services to the town of Lewisville. We do this on an annual basis, but the contract is for three years. This is the new term or the new, start of a new three-year term.
Very good. Any questions for the manager?
I think that covers, I think most people know it, but it covers six deputies in the town, so.
Yes, sir, that's right.
And I'd like just to have it stated for the record, what is the next year's contract amount with the deputies or for the sheriff's department?
The next year's contracted amount is estimated at five hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred thirty dollars.
Thank you.
And I believe after our solid waste and recycling expenditure, this is our second biggest item that we allocate tax dollars for.
That's correct.
Any additional questions? Further discussion? Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Mock makes the second. Council members, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, that passes unanimously. Mr. Hauser, you have awarding a paving contract.
I believe you have before you resolution two zero one seven zero two eight, and basically what this does is authorize the manager to contract with Yakon Valley Paving. We had, all the bids that came in were over what we have, the amount that we have budgeted for them, and, but Yakon Valley was the lowest. So I'm working with them now to try to verify the amount of square yardage that we have for paving versus what they supplied and see if we can get those numbers closer in an effort to stay within the budgeted range that we have. If we can't get to that, then I'll end up having to drop one of the roads off of the ones that I have here for paving. So we don't have the number right now, but it won't be over what we have remaining in the streets and pile bill line items.
So you're asking us to approve a resolution, any amount of?
Well, I didn't wanna give the amount because I don't want the...
Understood.
Contractor to work just to get it to that number.
Okay.
If possible, I wanna get it below.
The resolution would set the limit not to exceed the remaining portion or funds that we have for street resurfacing for the fiscal year.
Subject to your all's continued negotiation?
That's correct, yes.
With the paper?
Mm-hmm.
Does this leave us with any emergency funds for the remainder of the year? If it were to exhaust everything that's left in our budget and the pile bill budget?
Not anything for emergency, but usually the line items that we have in pile bill and streets is set aside just for paving and not necessarily any emergency type funds.
I know of a place that I'm gonna share with you after the meeting tonight that needs some attention, and it, you know, these other roads here that are out, I can't speak to the condition of them, but, and I understand that you're not setting a particular amount, but at the same time, I'm not comfortable with the way this is worded, I'll be honest with you. This is the first time we've ever had a paving contract presented to us that did not have a dollar amount attached to it that I'm aware of in the number of years that I've served on council. We've been taking care of our paving contracts and so forth. And I recognize the reason that it's worded this way, but I'm, again, not comfortable with it from the standpoint of I know of a road or a street that is in need of repair that is not on this list.
I understand.
At this point in time.
You have a lot, did I hear you make reference to or allude to the fact that there is already a budgetary number out there for the paving for remaining?
Yes, sir.
For this paving year.
Mm-hmm.
So that number can be known, it's just not provided in this document, is that correct?
Right, I didn't wanna make it known publicly because I didn't want, say, that number to get to the contractor and he base his numbers solely on that. I didn't want him to just bring his numbers down just to match what we had remaining.
But the reality is it's already in the budget. Is that right?
It is, yes.
Okay, so...
Yeah, the amount that we've got left is a defined amount.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
So it's budgeted. Well, I know you prioritize these streets and I don't wanna get into a discussion of which one of these you might drop or should drop or think about dropping, but based on the presentation we heard earlier tonight, was this crack repair taken into consideration? Although some of these streets may be in need of repair, now we're gonna have another budget and another paving, series of streets to be paved, I'm just wondering, is that one of the things that was considered in this process?
As far as the selection of these?
Yeah.
Yes, these came from the survey.
Okay, all right. And so it's a mixture of blend, as the mayor was talking about earlier on?
Yeah, we've got some that are being a full depth patch, and then some of them are overlays.
And crack repair?
Not in this batch, I don't have any crack sealing in this batch.
There are no roads in need of crack sealing?
There are, mm-hmm.
I don't wanna tell you all how to use it, I'm just wondering if you can back into your number by putting in some things that are less costly in this cycle and then picking up some other streets in the next cycle. I don't know if that's doable or not doable. I don't know if that's doable or not doable.
That's your desire.
No, it's a question.
He did arrive at these numbers by accepting sealed bids.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I see, based on these streets.
Yeah, there was a scope put out for those streets.
Based on these streets?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay.
One additional question I've got at this point in time is, again, I don't know the exact location of these streets, but are these grouped into a particular neighborhood or a particular area?
It is. It's two different neighborhoods. Divaldi, Lawrence Ridge, Dewberry, Lumley, they're all off of.
Reynolds.
Reynolds.
Well, Divaldi's off of Reynolds, Lawrence Ridge being off of Lewisville Clemens. And then the other ones are in.
Forestwood.
Forestwood, thank you.
Just trying to be comfortable accepting a modification to this resolution that inserts the words "not to exceed the funding that is currently available"?
That's what it says.
That's what it says already.
Because the point is, we probably all have roads that we would look at and say, we would like some attention paid to those roads, but I believe the process that the Public Works Director's come up with is the one that we've used, you know, by not inserting roads into the process, but rather following the prescribed order of roads as established in our needs schedule.
I agree with that, but this is the first time we've ever had a resolution to authorize a contract for paving that is presented to us, does not have a price tag with it at this point in time, is my point.
How about this? How about subjectory view of the budgeted number, if you put that in here?
I'm fine with that. I've just, it's the principle of it, and I understand the reasoning behind it, but it is public record, and I find it ironic that we, in our presentations earlier tonight, we're talking about CAFRA and openness and reporting and so forth, but yet we're.
Well, these numbers are available, most frankly.
I know.
Yeah, so all somebody has to do is look at the budget.
Well, that's true.
And they know that number's there.
I understand that, but.
How quickly can we make it, the number, more visible?
We can tell you right now.
Yeah, I was going to say, either I could drop.
Other than right now, how quickly can you make it available to the public?
I could drop one of the roads right now and give you the remaining total.
So you could drop a road which is going to impact somebody. What you're trying to do is have the, some leverage or some, the ability to negotiate to try to get all of these roads, I think, I'm assuming that's what you're trying to do.
That's what I want to do.
To get all of these roads done.
If we can't reach that, then.
And by leaving the number at whatever the number is for the road you now would identify, I mean, that's just what you're going to pay, and those are the roads that are going to get done, and you're going to spend all the money, I guess. And then the last road's not, whatever road you drop's not going to be done.
Well, it just deep push to the next.
Well, some future time, yeah.
And I'm not trying to get the cart before the horse here, but you're already working on the so-called fall schedule of paving that comes in next year's budget, correct? All right. I just want to make sure that something that may have got left off of the spring season, if you will, of the outgoing budget that we'll be wrapping up in June 30th, that got left off, maybe it'll get picked up at the next one, so.
So George, you've got this, I think what you said earlier, you've got this whittled down now to one vendor. And what's your timeframe of trying to wrap up this negotiation?
Well, I will be meeting with him either tomorrow or Monday to finish up on that.
And I don't know if there's a mechanism, excuse me, to, I'm not suggesting we put it off, but is there any way to approve this, Mike, without calling another meeting?
I think you can have a motion and a second and a discussion, and the vote will be what the vote's going to be.
Mike, I'll do this. I know I'm the one that started this discussion. I will reluctantly make a motion to approve this resolution, and I'm not really happy with the way it's been presented to us, but at the same time, I think we need to move forward and go ahead and get the paving contract approved.
And I'll second that.
With reluctance, right.
And to allay some of your concerns, we will have that number published immediately upon completion of your negotiations with your contractor. We will publish that number on our website, is that correct, which would reference that contract? Very good. So it's a matter of two days to give our Public Works Director the ability to negotiate a better deal for our residents. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to also make a motion, if it's possible. I know Fred alluded to a road he had in mind. I would prefer that we not name that road in public. I mean, that's what George is here to get the roads. I just feel like we can't just, oh, I want this road paved. That's my concern. I'll take it.
Yeah, and that's not what I implied. I just, I know where there's a bad place in the road.
Yeah, I do, too.
And I don't live on that road.
I don't either, but. Thank you, gentlemen.
Call a question.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, and Councilman Sadler has called the question. All those in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it does appear, with the exception of this last item, that we moved through these resolutions and ordinances very quickly. This is not the first time that we've heard of them, not the first time that we've read them, not the first time that we've studied them. The council meets the first Thursday of every month, at which time we get an extensive briefing on all of these items, and council can ask questions at that point, and then we can leave that briefing, go along and do our additional research, ask questions of the manager or whoever in town staff to get the full resolve of the questions that we have. So when we see them tonight, it's not for the first time, and it's not because we're moving through them quickly without due diligence. It's just that we've done our work, we've done our homework, so to speak, before we've come to this meeting. We have no unfinished business tonight. Thank you. Want to give us administrative reports, please?
Okay, next is upcoming events at Shallowford Square and town holidays. On May 29th, Monday, which will be Memorial Day, it will be a town holiday, we will also have an event at Shallowford Square. This is our Military Appreciation Concert. And then moving into June, June 16th will be our second movie night. I believe that movie is going to be ET. So that's going to be a big one. And then lastly, I will mention on the 24th of June, which is a Saturday, will be our, I think it might be our third annual street party.
I will make a comment at this point in time, not to steal from what Stacy will be bringing forward, I'm sure, to later date, but as of yesterday, the town is now the prowler of over 30 hula hoops that will be integrated into activities on the town square as we go forward. And that ought to be entertaining to watch children and adults that used to could hula hoop try to fake that they can hula hoop, so.
We'll see if somebody can do 30 at once. We'll set our own record here at town.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin, for that piece of information. Mr. Manager, you want to bring us up to date of the actions that we took at a briefing last night?
Yes. At a briefing, we did have consideration approval of Resolution 2017-027. This was validating the pay policy for elected officials for Lewisville.
Very good. And that action item is also available information on the website, is that correct, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Very good. All right. We're now to the second opportunity that we have for members in our audience to participate in a public forum. If you have any comments, any thoughts that you'd like to share with us at this time, we welcome you to come forward and share those now. Anybody at all?
Anybody at all?
Okay, well, I'll remind you that we do have forums in the back of the room, should you wish to leave those comments in a written form, and of course, you're certainly welcome to come by Town Hall at any time and share your comments and thoughts with us. Council members, any comments this evening? I want to recognize the staff for a great event. Ms. Franklin, I think you were at the Beatles Revisited.
That was very, very good.
Ms. Mock was there. I think, I've heard nothing but great, great comments about that event. We do have, again, for the education of our wonderful students here, the town does allocate a certain amount of money, $6.30, for events per person of Lewisville residents, for events that occur throughout the spring, summer, and fall. And this basically provides, I think we're up to 14 or 15 events that our residents can attend free as part of being a resident of the town. They're great family entertainment, they're great opportunities for our folks to come together and meet each other and share a good time in the square or the park or someplace like that. I do want to recognize our graduating seniors from our Student Leadership Committee. I don't know if any of them are here this evening. No, they aren't? Okay, well, very good. I do want to recognize Emma Doll, Emily Goleman, Rebecca Gillen, Chase Hill, Jorian Stevens, and Ethan Thompson, who is our Student Leadership Committee Chair. They have been active in our committee for a number of years, I think most of them have. They will be graduating this year, and we wish them the best as they move on to their various endeavors and exciting adventures in life. With that, no other comments. Now it's time for the test for all the people in the audience. Are you all ready? Okay, we'll postpone it until after the meeting is adjourned. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Smith makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, those of you that joined us at home, we're glad you were with us. Those of you that joined us on Facebook, we appreciate your comments, and with that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.